Get the shoe on the road.
That's right.
Welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting on Monday, October 27th. Just a reminder that due to the Veterans Day holiday, there'll be no City Council meeting on the 11th. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chamber. The order of business is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. If you'd please spell your last name for us, that would help us. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date, nor plan for a future agenda. And we have a scout here from Troop Two who is matriculating towards his badge, so we appreciate him being here, seeing how city government runs. With that, Mary, call for item.
First would be the public hearing consent agenda, items one through 10.
Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please, Teresa.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items then. Items two through seven were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Seconded by John. Discussion, color roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then, our public hearing liquor resolutions. Call item 11, application of North American Martyrs Church for a special designated liquor license in an area measuring approximately 40 feet by 30 feet in the parking lot at 1101 Isaac Drive on November 16th from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Pat Hagadorn, H-A-G-E-D-A-Z-N-D-O-R-N.
Tell us just a little bit about what's going on.
Sure. This is for a beer garden for the North American Martyrs Church Bazaar, which is a fundraiser for our parish as well as for our school. It is the largest fundraiser that we use for our school. North American Martyrs is a Catholic parish, and our Catholic school has grown to be the largest parochial elementary through eighth grade school in the city, I believe.
Very well. Questions? Carl? So how many students are there?
We are, if you count the preschool classes, we are over 650, I believe.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Pat. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Next is item 12, application of the Hot Mess for, in addition to its Class C liquor license of an outdoor area measuring approximately 5 feet by 14 feet to the east at 408 South 11th Street. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Jason Aples, 1200 South 23rd, owner of Hot Mess at, it's actually 410 South 11th.
Thank you.
Have that sorted out.
We'll get that corrected.
Okay. You want to tell us a little bit about?
Just a little neighborhood bar. I just want to put a little smoking area in the back, and I've got about five extra feet that I can use as a patio space and accommodate my smoking clientele so they're not out front on the sidewalk anymore.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Questions? Next item, please.
Next would be item 13, application of Misty's to delete an outdoor area measuring approximately 24 feet by 8 feet from its Class CK liquor license at 200 North 11th Street. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Chad Carlson, the owner of Misty's. And with the P Street construction, we were told we needed to reduce our outside seating, so it's just a reduction of our current outside seating, within the same footprint of previous.
Okay. Any questions? Will you put a plug in, since we did that, we'll let you put a nice plug in for Misty if you want?
Best prim rib steaks in the state, country.
Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Anybody in the council who'd like to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items 11, 12, and 13.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion, color roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance is second reading. Item 14 is amending Section 2.42.040 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the divisions of the Urban Development Department to restrict the authority of the Urban Development Department by requiring that any acquisition of residential property having value exceeding $50,000 for which the source of funding is community improvement financing be approved by resolution of the City Council.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please? Just a minute. Well, we've got to have pros first, just give us a second.
Jeff Krupatrick, City Attorney. This was based upon an idea that Councilman Fellers brought, I believe it was last year. And at the time, we suggested that the short-term answer was to put this in the CIP, and that was done by this council. That CIP terminated at the end of the two-year period, and then we had no, it wasn't on our books at all. So Councilman Fellers came back to us and asked us to add this to the municipal code at that time, and that's what you have before you. This wasn't the CIP. This council's already acted on it once, but since that expired, this permanently puts it in our code.
Any questions?
Thank you.
If my memory is right, this was also something that was discussed with Director Landis so that we had a clear expectation of what was back and forth. Wasn't it North 28th that we had some issues? After the fact, this will clarify that up front.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Come right on up.
Terry Pope Gonzalez, 349 South First Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. Let me write my name, takes me a minute. I didn't know this is on here, and don't know what I'm going to say. I don't think he needs to have a control of that much money. I think Dave Landis is a little bit too big for his britches. So I don't think he needs control of that much money. And I will tell you something else. The next time Dave Landis puts his hands on me and tries to push me out of his office, there will be police in there because he has no right to touch me in any way. My phone number's 402-499-5716. There's no restraining order, and that order from the, that letter from the mayor, my brother said it's not a judge, it's not a court order. You touch me again, you'll understand what I'm capable of.
Point made. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next would be item 15, amending Title I of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to general provisions to create a new Chapter 1.30, sale of city real property.
Jeff Krupatrick, City Attorney. The Lot Department brought this amendment to the ordinance forward to streamline slightly the procedure to be followed for those occasional instances where the city ends up owning property, not because we purchased the property or condemned the property, but just as a, for example, if we have a loan on our property and the homeowner is not making payments, and we have to, the sheriff's sale bid it in in order to protect our interest, we end up with property, generally residential property, that we didn't plan to, but we end up owning it because of, in order to protect the city's interest. And then we turn around and sell that. These don't occur very often, less probably than once a year. But on those occasions where it does happen, we turn around and sell it to a homeowner. Quite often, it's a low-income home buyer, and the timing on the sale can be significant to that buyer. What this does is it streamlines the process very, in a small amount. We save about a week, sometimes a little bit longer, depending upon when the sale falls in relationship to the City Council meeting. This maintains in the position of the City Council, the ability, the power, the authority to vote and approve the sale. But by changing it from an ordinance to a resolution, it means that we don't have to have it on the agenda for three weeks, we can do it in two weeks. Under the city charter, City Council has to approve every sale of property. And what you're doing, if you would approve this amendment, is you would basically be delegating to yourself the ability to approve a sale by resolution rather than by ordinance. Because it's an action you're taking to amend the code, it's also a change that you can reverse at any time. But it's a very small delegation of authority from the City Council to the City Council by a different mechanism.
Jonathan?
Well, we had something come before us before that we were not excited about. This is a different version. I understand this still provides us with some authority through resolution to approve a sale rather than simply approving it, preapproving it essentially, letting the administration take action. But I guess you say these come up now and then. I'm having trouble recalling these instances. I guess it would be helpful to have that information, when they've occurred, whether or not it's been an issue, that we follow our normal process. And so if we're going to change something like this, I'd like to know a little bit more.
Well, I appreciate that. And I can, we can try to give you those numbers. I can tell you that we did ask Urban Development, and they said, my recollection is, four to six times over the last few years. So approximately one, one and a half times a year. It has been an issue on occasion, where it was at least, fairly soon, inconvenience for the property buyer to wait out the period. That's why we brought it before you, but I can certainly try to get you further information on that.
And was that one week the issue? Or was it that, you know, the fact that we had to approve it at all was somehow the bigger thing, that there was a, you know, there were a few weeks involved? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what the problem really was, what this actually would solve. Because this does set up a two-track policy.
Right.
On most sales.
Almost all sales.
We'd go through the ordinance process, but on a few, we'd go through this resolution process.
Right.
Might be a little confusing.
It would be a little bit, but if, for those very few sales, if it could help someone acquire a home without having financing problems, without going to the inconvenience, we thought it would be worth streamlining the process even slightly.
Couple months ago, we had a house that came up in front of here. It was like some house with orange pillars or something. We all talked about, is it orange or a different color?
Right.
That's the property that set this off, correct?
I don't, it may well have been.
He was getting pretty tight towards his closing date.
Right.
Yes. And we're not necessarily, well, we are setting two tracks, but we're being very specific about what two tracks we're setting. For properties that, for the only reason that we're acquiring them is because of our own interests, and, you know, these are generally properties that need, may have a faster closing date than others. Yeah, I helped, I helped work on this with the Lot Department. I thought it was, you know, a fairly straightforward, something that'd get people to closing a little bit easier and not have to worry about whether we're going to pass an ordinance or not.
Well, certainly, and many of us that have bought homes realize that sometimes it comes down to the last few days, and it can make a difference on your interest rate whether you're able to close or not. And when we look at a lot of these city properties, we're talking about a smaller group of people that are eligible because of the income restrictions that go with that.
And these are properties that we want anyway. I mean, these are properties that we want to turn over as quickly as we can to get them back on the tax rolls and to get owners in them to improve them and to, you know, have a better livable neighborhood. And, you know, this is a good policy because we're trying to get people into homes.
Jonathan?
Well, and I certainly, I'm happy challenging the city attorney. I don't want to challenge my colleague. I didn't know you were involved. I guess the previous version, of course, the big holdup was the fact that it had this huge third category, which said, essentially, we were preapproving sales of land that were involved in a redevelopment plan. And so the other two elements were of less concern, but that was preapproving altogether.
Yes.
And I guess if that's the issue here, and these are properties where we want, we want to get rid of them, we also want to hurry this along as much as possible, we could save, you know, a month of time if we didn't have to go through the resolution process. I feel like, you know, if it's, if this is truly the right thing to do, I don't know. Why is it important that it come back by resolution then, for those few properties?
Well, I appreciate that. When this proposal, much different, was originally in front of this council, I heard two really issues. One was the TIF-oriented concern, because that would, could at times be a significant amount of property with a significant price tag. And the argument for preapproving those is, those are properties that would have already been approved by this council already. You would have already seen the project, you would have already said, that's okay, we want you to sell that. That's why it was part of that policy. This council, what I heard, had a problem with that, saying, that's okay, bring it back in front of us because there's a lot of value here, this is a big investment for the city, and so it's probably appropriate that we consider it one more time. The second part of it was, though, that we want to, we do want to have it back, we want to vote on it. And so having listened to what the council said, but still wanting to streamline the process even a little bit, if we could, that's why we came up with the idea. And Rick Peyo said, well, let's try a resolution. At least then we would save at least a week. And it could be longer than that, depending upon when the City Council meeting falls. And we're entering a period now where we have a number of Mondays where the City Council is not meeting at all. Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, Martin Luther King Day. When you talk about only saving a week, but it could easily be two weeks, it could easily be 20 days difference, just because of whether, how the calendar falls.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the other, the other thing is, on these, we only have them back for that third day to vote. We don't really hear anything or do any other different information on it. I mean, if we're comfortable with it, if we're not comfortable with it, we can always delay. We have that option if we wanted to, but, you know, these are fairly straightforward transactions from our standpoint, and I think the extra week, you know, if it holds up a buyer, I don't know if it's necessarily worth it for our processes. I don't, you may feel differently about that.
Well, I guess it, that's, it's true that, that we don't hear new information, but that's true with all of our ordinances generally. We, there's often, you know, sometimes it's valuable to have the extra week. Ninety percent of the time, it's not. But we still, because of the 10% of the cases that it is important, we feel it's important to have that process in place and not feel pressured, just in case an issue comes up. I don't know if one would in these particular cases. I would note, even though I rarely want to waive the rules, that in a true emergency, a true compelling case where someone, someone's deal will fall through, no one will give them any leeway whatsoever, that we could take action sooner if we needed to. And I bet that rarely occurs. People may feel like it's getting close, but there's a difference between that and actually being told by the bank, sorry, we're, we're out of time.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate that this council does have the ability to waive the rule. When you're dealing with bankers, though, you would be putting the buyer, and really the city that's working with that buyer in a position of saying, well, we can go to the council and ask them to waive the rule, but we certainly wouldn't be in a position to say, don't worry about it, I guarantee you the council will waive that time limit. I mean, we would never be in a position of being able to guarantee what this council would do.
You can't do that now. We could decide to hold up a resolution.
You could.
No one can speak to what the council will do. We could hold it up for another month.
Not even us.
Not even us. So I just feel like all you can do is say, you know, we believe that this will likely not be a controversial issue, or we believe that, given the set of circumstances, you know, we could get, and we'll even check with our council members to see if they're okay, given this really tight timeline. I just, my guess is this comes up, there may be a certain number of these cases that come up per year, the number that actually have a real time pressure behind them may be once every five or 10 years, for all we know. That's why I want to know more.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? I think we've heard them. Next item, please.
All right. Before we go on to the next item, I would like to note, any of the gentlemen that spoke on their liquor applications, if you do not want to remain in the chambers, you don't have to. Next would be item 16 is the text amendment, 14013, amending Section 2763160 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to special permits for excavation and stone milling, to allow stone milling as an accessory use to an excavation operation, and to eliminate stone milling as a separate permitted use.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. Here today on behalf of Gayna Trucking and Excavating and Edward Stone. The city was actually the applicant for the text amendment, but Marvin and I decided that I could carry the water on this one for the hearing purposes, since we were the cause of it. He's here to answer any questions, should you have them. What this language does, the Schwart Quarry, as many people knew it for decades, has operated down on South 54th Street near Roca for years, and Craig Gayna wanted to add a building there, and as such, it came to the attention and to Craig that you're under a special permit, a pre-existing special permit from when the zoning changes were redone significantly in 1979, and as such, we would need to amend the special permit. And so then, Planning, I think Wisely, said, why don't we take a closer look at exactly what's going on out here with the quarry? And since it's been in operation, there've been several acreage neighborhoods built around it, and they all built knowing that there was a quarry there, but we thought it would be a good time. And so we worked extensively with staff and the neighbors, and in a separate special permit, put some terms and conditions on the operations of the quarry. And that went through Planning successfully with no opposition. I think we got a lot of good input from the neighbors. So the text amendment before you, and we'll have one before the county, we're before you because we're in the three mile, basically is there to say that any of these pre-existing special permits won't have to meet all the conditions of the excavation and mining permits. Now, the excavation and mining permit is primarily set up for soil, and it's to be renewed every three years, and so we can kind of keep our hands around those open pits that are out there. But if you have a functioning quarry that existed prior to 1979, then this language allows them to not have to meet all those conditions, to not have to renew every three years. And so I think staff's comfortable with it, I think legal's comfortable with it on both the city and county side, and so that's why this amendment's in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Come right up.
Again, Terry Pope Gonzalez, shall we write it down? No, that's. Okay, good. Spill, it's all one word, right? P-L-P-E-g-o-n-z-a-l-e-z. He's talking about a quarry. Okay, now, I have no idea where you are, I don't know who you are. Like the quarry that's over on Third and Q where the crusher is, and they're doing all the concrete dust and all the crud. Like the quarry that they put 50 feet from my house, why I'm poisoned. So I'd like to know, is the rock that he's talking about, is it clean? Is it used? Because that's what has happened to me, I'm poisoned because of all that contaminated, toxic concrete dust. The quarry that they have over on Third and Q, all that stuff's going into downtown Lincoln. Third and Q is, the arena's on Eighth and Q, that's five blocks. So I just wanted to know, is it clean rock? Is it used rock? No, honey, tell me, is it clean?
I'll come back.
Okay. Because what's happening to me, I'm allergic to kerosene, so why am I going into anaphylactic shock? Because the stuff that's coming over to me is nasty contaminated. And I just found out they took the slurry, and it's over on West J, and they're putting it in dirt. They are putting the slurry after they dry it, they're putting it in dirt, and then they're mixing it in dirt and bringing it up over on West O. So the dirt has the slurry in it that comes from when they crush it up, and then they make the batch plant, and you guys all know where the batch plant is because you all let it happen. You really let it happen. So I don't appreciate it. I didn't come here to talk today about any of this today, but the reason that you see me, I was redheaded when this started. I wasn't on crutches, I didn't carry an EpiPen, you didn't go into asthma attacks when you came to see me, you came to my house, I didn't have a friend in a loader, happening all the time, the little kids could play in their park. So honey, I don't know you, and I'm sorry if I'm causing you problems. I don't know you at all. You're not the contractor that I have the heart on for. So I'm just asking, is it clean rock? Is it good to the neighborhood? See, when they did it to me, my father-in-law had been there since 1927. 1927, that's a lot of years. Now, the city and their great leaders let the one come in next to me in 2000. So this fight is 15 years, and I got another good 50 years of fight in me. So I'm just asking, are you really caring about the people, or you're just caring about the bottom line, the profit? I don't want, I don't feel well, so I, and I get really testy when I don't feel well. Aren't you glad I don't drink? Anyway, thank you. Terry Pope Gonzalez, 349 South First Street. Come look at the operation right 50 feet from me. Only thing behind us is a chain link fence. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Rebuttal, please.
If, could we have Marvin?
Okay, Marvin?
Be good to hear from Marvin about this facility and what, the history of it and zoning and those kinds of issues with planning. Marvin Crowe, Planning. The, let me first say that the issues being discussed for Third and Q or First and L Street are different. Those are areas that are zoned industrial one, they're concrete paving contracting operations. The, this particular amendment deals with basically rural areas, areas that are zoned agricultural today, but they have some natural resource value. A quarry is a mining operation, and we have not a lot of quality stone in the county for mining, but we do have a couple of places where we've had longstanding operations in the south part of the county. This one happens to be in your three-mile jurisdiction, and back in about 2009, I think it was, we had a lot of problems with soil excavation in the northern part of the county. Most of it was in the three-mile jurisdiction of the city. We created an advisory committee, went to a lot of involvement with people in the industry as well as the neighbors who were uncomfortable with how those operations were occurring, to come up with some new standards, and those standards dealt with a pretty temporary operation that usually just lasts for two or three years. And so we put in some regulations that apply well to those soil mining operations. We haven't heard a lot of complaints since, and there's been good monitoring of those operations. But they don't apply to these very unique situations where there's actually stone that's being dug out and excavated and then being milled using a rock crusher and then being hauled out. And so there were questions like, "Well, what exactly materials could come in for the rock crusher?" We use the special, the fact that they had to expand to create a special permit that would deal with operating hours and other conditions. The neighbors, I think, were in the end very happy that they had that tool and that that issue was resolved. But in order to be able to clarify and continue that stone milling is something that is really only accessory to a quarry operation, but it can contain other materials, and it shouldn't just have a three-year life and have to be renewed because these have been going on for decades already and may be out there for decades more. So it was a different animal. We just felt like it was time to tweak the ordinance and the county resolution to reflect that.
Thank you. John?
Mr. Crowell, thank you. Would you distinguish a little bit more in thinking on a timeline here of this new, or this South 54th Street quarry versus what is occurring at Third and Q? I mean, is, you said that's industrial zoning. We've got that. Let's say you go ahead 10, 20 years. And as the city grows out in the county, are there protections there so that there'll be setbacks and everything so that it can continue in its operation? Or just how does that operate?
You know, I think, I think anyone who has some acquaintance, and I don't have the full acquaintance with the First and L Street situation, but I know something about it, knows that there is some unfortunate history to the zoning and land uses that occurred there before zoning. And when zoning was in its infancy, normally, we don't put residential adjacent to industrial zoning anymore, but that's the situation that you have at First and L Street. And so it's very difficult to unravel what's really basically a, two uses that are very incompatible with each other. But that's the situation you have down at First and L. Very zoning can't deal well with situations that are retroactive. I think both, both the industrial and the residents in this area can both claim a long history of operation in that area. Probably, the residential came first. Around 1900, I think, is when a lot of the homes in that area were built. That's why part of South Bottoms is recognized as a, as a National Register Landmark District. But there's also a long history before zoning and, and after zoning, from the 30s to the 50s, where industrial uses started coming into this area. They were legally allowed at the time. And so it's a situation that's going to take some solution other than zoning to deal with.
I guess the final follow-up on the South 54th. Are there new health standards as far as dust and that sort that apply to them so that regardless of whether it's a three-year renewal or not, they're following appropriate levels?
Yes, the Health Department has air quality standards with regard to both the trucking operations and the dust that it may create, as well as the rock crusher that's out there and, and what the limits are on emissions from that operations. Now, I know at First and L, there've been, there's been monitoring of the current requirements for air quality. And even though the Health Department has reported that they're meeting all those conditions, residents still say that it's not acceptable to them.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mike?
Just a couple of things regarding the questions that were asked. Yeah, there is a rock crusher on this site, and we learned quite a bit about that and the regulations of it. Doug Taggeman from the Health Department came and spoke at our neighborhood meeting and talked about both the dust emission regulations and the noise regulations from a crusher and how they're measured and all these type of things. And so, and the situation at the quarry, this quarry, the short quarry, I think was more noise after 5:00. And so we limited the hours of operation for that from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. And so, and so I think the neighbors were in tune with that, happy about that. But this, it sits down in a hole. It's buried. It's out in a, you know, we have over 100 acres here. Separated a pretty good distance from the houses. What I will say, though, in regard to the questions regarding other sites, is that, and I believe and I know Craig Gana has on this, I think it's either a yearly or every couple of year permit from the Health Department. And so that is the agency that oversees that in terms of dust emissions and noise for whether it is a permanent, and I don't know how the one on O Street is defined, if it's permanent or temporary, but the Health Department is really on top of that. And so I think if there's some questions, they would be the department to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? John?
There was a question about clean or dirty slurry or what have you.
What, what, on this site...
Doesn't pertain to this site, though, or what's germane to...
Coming in on the other side, John, yeah. This site, they do some of the limestone that comes out of it, but primarily the rock crusher here is the recycling of concrete from roads being created to aggregate, taken back out and put as foundation for new roads. So won't be the case in this special...
Has nothing to do with this issue.
Yeah.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. We'll go on to public hearing resolutions. Item 17 is approving Red Strike Inc. doing business with Sun Valley Lanes as a Keno satellite site at 321 Victory Lane.
My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located in Omaha, Nebraska. I have with me today John, the owner of Sun Valley Lanes, and we're just here to ask for your approval of the Keno satellite location and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. Staff questions? Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. I'll call item 18 next. This is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of October 1st through the 15th, 2014.
Anybody who'd like to speak to a claim, come right on forward, sir.
My name is Van Lanick, 6520 Darlington Court. On September 25th, I sent a claim to the city's attorney's office requesting payment for damage caused by a tree to my motorhome. I received a reply October 22nd saying they recommended denial. On L Street, they say there was no failure of the maintenance of the tree. If this was true, why did the Parks and Recreation trim the tree a few days after I reported the damage? They also say that the driver has responsibility to maintain the proper outlook. As I was driving up east on L Street, going up a hill, I would have to move over into the left lane to stay away from the tree branch. And so I would be meeting oncoming traffic going the wrong way. I truly believe that the city failed to maintain the tree, and therefore I feel the city should pay for my claim.
Okay, any questions? I'll ask. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Lanick, for being here. So you were driving on L Street?
Yes.
Approximately where on L?
It's between 70th Street and, can't think of that street that...
It was west of 70th?
West of 70th?
West of 70th. It's a dead-end street.
Okay.
Mr. Lanick, we're going to have the city attorney step up, and he'll explain to you the Municipal Tort Claims Act. You can sit here, and it'll be, come a little more apparent, I think, why they denied your claim.
Well, as I understand the claim, during that drive with his motorhome, it actually made contact with two different trees, one on L Street and one on A Street. The tree that is on L Street is a city tree. The tree that is on A Street is a private tree. And so you had two different incidents that occurred on the same drive, which understandably would create some issue as far as what damage was caused by one, what tree. When we went out and examined the city tree, it appeared to us it was a healthy tree. We didn't receive any notice prior to hearing the claim that there was a branch that was too low, that there was a diseased branch, that there was anything wrong with the tree. And one of the, as you know from past claims, when we receive claims, we look at two different issues. One is, is it a city tree? Because oftentimes they're not. And in this case, there was a tree that was involved that was not a city tree. But there was a tree that was involved that was a city tree. Once we've determined it's a city tree, the second step is to determine whether or not the city was negligent. Did we have notice that there was a problem or a defect with the tree? That it was diseased, that a branch was broken off, that there was an obvious problem with the tree? And after reviewing our records, it was clear that we had not received any notice that there was a problem with this tree at all, that when we went out and examined the tree, it was a healthy tree. It was not diseased. It was not dying. There weren't a bunch of dead branches. We also, when we looked at the tree more closely, the lowest branch was 13 and 1/2 feet above the street. And the limb that was hanging down that apparently made the contact with Mr. Lanick's vehicle was about an inch and an inch and a half in diameter and was not a live branch. So this was not the kind of branch that we felt would have inflicted the kind of damage to his vehicle that his claim was based upon, or most of his claim was based upon. We suspect it was, in fact, most of the damage was caused by the private tree. But even if the damage was caused by the public tree, it's our position that without any notice of any problem with the tree, we didn't have an obligation or the ability to correct the problem prior to the damage to his vehicle.
In regards to the, why we cut the tree immediately thereafter, it would, we now have been notified.
Exactly.
And we now are at risk if we don't correct.
Yes, exactly. And if there, if we have received notice of it and just blew it off and someone else complained about the damage caused, then, then we would be liable. And those are circumstances where we do pay on claims.
Any other questions? Would you talk with Mr. Lanick about what his appeal rights are and all of that? So we're clear on where we are. Go ahead, Mr. Lanick.
Well, that tree, he says, is 13 feet. My motorhome is only 12 feet 6 inches. That tree he's talking about, the dead branch, that was the one that I hit. And so there, it was damage to my vehicle when I hit a branch on that tree. So...
Okay. I'm, I, I...
I have...
I understand your contention. The issue, however, becomes that unless we were notified in advance that that was there, then we, then the city is not responsible under the Municipal Claims Act. Is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement. Now, that's based upon our recommendation. If the council acts on our recommendation, they can deny the claim. You can accept the claim. If you deny the claim, then it would be your option. Once we've taken that official action as a city, which would be the city council taking that action, you could then go to court and file a civil action against the city because at that point, under state law, the city has denied your claim, and you have the right at that point to go to court.
I would like to find out about the measurement of that tree. You say it's 13 foot something. It's not. That, of course, we can't measure it now because you trimmed it.
Right. Well, that would, our records indicate that it was 13 and 1/2 feet when they cut it down. Now, is it possible that your action and going underneath the tree knocked off a portion of the branch? So it became higher, that's possible?
After I hit it, that branch hung there for four or five days before you come to trim it.
Well, I would tell you that I don't believe that our recommendation to the council would be different, even if the branch was down at 11 and 1/2 feet. The fact remains that we did not have notice there was a problem with the tree. The tree was healthy, and our recommendation to the council would be to deny the claim.
Well, you better look at all your trees because you can't drive hardly any street in this town. And, and I can go, if you want, I will start going every city street, anywhere in town, and tell you, "You have problems on your trees." And there's going to be a lot of cases coming your way because you are not treating the citizens fair. Because that tree damaged my motorhome, and I feel that the city is responsible for it.
Okay, Mr. Lanick, thank you very much.
And...
Jonathan?
That's not a very good way to treat a citizen that's been in this town for over 50 years.
I was just going to ask about Mr. Lanick's damage from another tree, you said? So this was on this, when did this other damage occur?
It happened...
The same day.
Same day, same trip?
Yes.
Okay, so there were two limbs that were hit?
Yes.
And that was a private tree overhanging A Street?
Yes.
And that private homeowner would be responsible for that if it were not properly maintained?
Yes. Well, they would be in the same position.
Right. If they had no notice, it might be that they would not be responsible. In which case, as this is the case with, say, insurance in a homeowner environment where you have a tree limb fall on the neighbor's house. You own the tree. It falls on the neighbor's house. You were not aware of it. Your neighbor maybe wasn't aware that there was a problem with the tree. In that case, it's the neighbor who files with their own homeowner's insurance because the person who owns the tree had no notice and does not... So this isn't just about city. This is about the general rules regarding claims of who's responsible?
No, we have a municipal tort claim.
Well, we have a specific act regarding, but in a general sense, that would be the case even in a private setting.
You have a duty as a private citizen to maintain your properties, but wouldn't inflict damage to others?
So we don't know in this case, then, what might have happened?
We don't know. The facts may well be different. I mean, we didn't go out and, and, I mean, they may have that, I don't know how low the branch was for the private owner. And we don't know whether they knew that it was a problem. They might have had people complain about it for years. We don't know. We're just not in a position...
But it just, given that the damage was apparently caused by that branch, though, that affects... I mean, you can't determine what damage was caused by which incident, given that it happened on the same day.
It makes it more difficult.
Yes, you can. Because the one, the branches on 70th Street are pretty much worn down from city garbage trucks and all other semis that go down that street. This damage was done by the one on L Street.
Okay.
I know that for a fact.
John?
One or two questions. Did you investigate the A Street tree to see what characteristics it had that would be different? We did look at the A Street tree. It seemed to be a bigger branch, at least from the visual examination. And we also notified the owner of that property on A Street to let them know that there had been a complaint regarding their tree. Where along A Street was that?
It's at the entrance to Regency, approximately across the street from Seacrest Field.
And my last question is, is there a standard for the height of trees? Because Mr. Lanick mentioned, you know, semis and other tall vehicles that would be going. And do we have some standard like that?
You know, that's a question that I can't answer off the top of my head.
It's a good question, but it's not a question I...
Apparently not, because there are thousands and thousands of trees. And you guys are going to have the same case again. On all these streets, you're planting the trees between the street and then the sidewalk, four or five feet. And you can't go down a street. Evergreen Street, I can't, I can't use that street. I can't even hardly go there with my car anymore. Somebody needs to look at these trees. They are totally, totally overgrown. I love trees. I've lived in three different houses in Lincoln. I've planted 15 trees on my property, but they're not being maintained, and they need to be maintained. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. I'll call item 19, Comp Plan Conformance 14019, approving an amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to add the A and P2 redevelopment project for the redevelopment of the Ambassador and President apartment buildings, generally located at the northwest corner of South 14th Street and Lincoln Mall.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, applicant in this case, we are in the second of three stages should we ultimately get to the place of assisting in the Ambassador and President housing units being refurbished and modernized. This is the place in which we amend the existing downtown plan to create a provision that would be consistent with the description of the redevelopment agreement that we are working on now. Have a rough draft that's been completed and is in its final stages of being drafted and brought to you. This is not hypothetical. In the event you give us the green light, you'll see this again soon as we complete this project. Now, this is the Ambassador and the President, uh, housing units, and right here is the State Capitol. It's directed across the street. It is, uh, housing for very poor people. These are folks that have sometimes fifty percent of the average median income or less. There are seventy-one units when it'll be done, some of them studio, some of them one-bedroom, that will be, again, back on the market and available for low-income use. The significant disincentives for the buildings now are the fact that the heating and air conditioning was jury-rigged years ago. Parts are not available. There are times when the building is in part uninhabitable because you can't control the circumstances. That has been at ninety percent of occupancy, seventy percent of occupancy, and fifty percent of occupancy at different times, depending on where you are in that cycle. There's a need for energy efficiency in the windows, and there is a desire to do some of the work in this courtyard area, the return to some historically appropriate, uh, courtyard work. The project would been, would not have come to you but for a change about, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago. The resources to do this project, that about eight million dollars, were assembled by the folks that run the Ambassador and the President. It's a, a nonprofit, but they do pay taxes on this, and they have for many years. But, because of the sequestration that occurred at the federal level, a critical part of the four hundred thousand dollars of the eight million dollar project were no longer available from federal funds. The lending that had gone into creating the eight million dollars of resources was premised on that plan and only that plan, which means that the President and Ambassador weren't able to come back and say, okay, could we just do seven point six million dollars? The answer was no. You got to do exactly the project that we said yes to when we said yes to the deal, which means they needed to come up with four hundred thousand dollars, and the way to do that was to use TIF. We think that the project will generate about five hundred thousand dollars of TIF. And it will be a developer purchase situation, which the city will not stand behind the bonds, as has been traditional. If you were to look at your notes, you'd see that there are fourteen ways in which the comp plan is, is indicative of places where this project is consistent with the comp plan. Capital Environments has reviewed it, and they approved it unanimously, as has the Planning Commission, with their recommendation that you support the project. The developers are here and are available to answer your questions as well.
Any questions, Mr. Landis?
Yes, Mr. Landis, could you talk about the TIF history on these two buildings?
There was, in the early nineties, assistance from the city, but it was done essentially with CDBG money and thirty-seven thousand dollars of TIF money. There was, uh, that was the amount of TIF that was created by the, the improvements that apparently occurred at that time. It was dedicated to that purpose. And there has been, once, about twenty-some years ago, thirty-seven thousand dollars of TIF money in the building.
So what is our policy about doing a second TIF on project?
Um, we've done, one other that comes to mind was the Cornuska Hotel. And there, we did an initial TIF project, and then when they expanded their conference center, we assisted the second time. I do not know that the city has a specific policy on that. I do know that it's very rare.
Larry?
Dave, do you have more specific information on how the TIF dollars will be budgeted?
We have...
The materials we had?
Sure. We are in the, in the final stages of drafting the redevelopment agreement, and that will contain that. However, we do have a pretty clear idea. We're working with some existing assumptions. And the money that we will spend, the, the, are in three places. The largest, and it's over two hundred thousand dollars, is in assisting the heating and air condition, which is barely operable and will move to being energy efficient. The second is in energy efficiency in windows. And then the smallest amount will be in the treatment of the courtyard, the use of historically appropriate accoutrements and the creation of a courtyard space in this area. And that amounts to maybe like sixty-seven thousand dollars. So the breakdown is something like two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the HUVAC, maybe a hundred and seventeen thousand for the windows, and about sixty-seven thousand dollars for the courtyard. However, the final terms and numbers are those which we will bring you in a redevelopment agreement. But those are the numbers that we're working with now.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Come right on. If you're planning to speak, come right on down in the front row. We'll take you one at a time, and we will know you're on the way. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Andrew Willis, Klein Williams Law Firm, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred in Lincoln. We represent the developer for the, on this project. Again, the redevelopment plan before you would permit the use of tax increment financing for this Ambassador and President redevelopment project. The terms and details are still being negotiated. We're, we're close, and we've got a, a general idea where it's going to end up, but we're still working on those, on those final details that we hope to present to you very, very soon in the redevelopment agreement if, if this plan amendment is approved. Tonight, we're asking the council to determine whether the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This project includes rehabilitation and remodeling of the Ambassador and President buildings. It's within the current Lincoln Center redevelopment area. This is mainly interior work, remodeling the buildings, creating some, it'll, we'll end up with seventy-one units, thirty efficiency and forty-one one-bedrooms. So it's increasing the number of one-bedroom units in the place, getting some larger units, more, uh, modern, more, better updated units. The, as mentioned earlier, the project will include energy efficiency, efficiency enhancements. The HVAC system needs to be replaced. Rather than doing the minimal code replacement, they're going to put in some heat pumps, some energy-efficient, uh, equipment over the top of that code base, and, and so there'll be about, the, the difference in meeting code and putting in the energy efficiency replace, the system that they're intending would be, that's where that two hundred thousand dollars, approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars comes from. It's the amount spent over code requirements, and that will help out, particularly in these low-income situations where it, if you can put in the higher improvements up front and reduce those costs for individuals going forward, oh, yeah, that have to pay out on a month-to-month basis. There's a, it's a, it's a great payoff there if we can, if we can get that in the, done at the beginning. The exterior, because this is, it's in the Capital Environments District, it's on the National Historical Register, there really isn't much exterior improvements that will be done. The, the main improvements really are some, essentially weatherproofing, because some of these, there's some deterioration in the exterior that's allowing weather to get in, that's causing some of these units that can't be used. So, it'll essentially be tuck pointing, the enhancement on the windows, they'll be replacing these with some energy-efficient windows that are still period-appropriate. And, and really, and then, and then a couple other pieces that were recommended by the Capital, Capital Environments Commission, the replacement of a, a canopy that was on the Fourteenth Street side by the Capitol of the President Buildings, and then some, some of these changes to the courtyard that were mentioned. But otherwise, the exterior will remain essentially the same, because that's the goal, historical preservation. Again, yeah, this is, you know, the goal here, in conformance with the comp plan, you know, we're going to preserve and enhance strong downtown, residential uses downtown, and particularly in this case, is to create a good affordable housing, some safe and effective affordable housing. As I mentioned, this project was approved by Capital Environments, the Commission, February twenty-seventh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Willis. A couple of questions. What's the current value of the two buildings?
It is one million, one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred dollars.
And do you know what that value is versus when it was first TIF'd in the nineties?
I do not know that.
And what are you proposing the, or what are you anticipating the value would be after the projects?
Just under three point three million, three hundred, and we've projected out three point, three million, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, based on an income approach that is, is used in similar apartment-type complexes in, in Lincoln.
And because you've got a number of low-income residents, that this will qualify for certain types of subsidies in that regard?
Uh, a main piece of the financing is the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, Section forty-two of the tax code. That, that's where a substantial amount of the, the financing for this project comes from. And, and again, that's, or, go ahead, I'll, yeah. Oh, I was gonna say, that was, that's part of the, um, the issue with this project is it was a, it's a Low Income Housing Tax Credit project. They applied for tax credits. There's, there was a change in federal law at the end of two thousand thirteen, and actually, in two thousand eight, the, the law was basically passed that there's a seventy percent tax credit that, for these, for these federal tax credits. In two thousand eight, what they called the nine percent floor, meaning that essentially these, this, the seventy percent credit was always figured at nine percent of, of basis. That's kind of where that number came from. That had been re, you know, re, re-approved every single year, up to two thousand thirteen. At the end of two thousand thirteen, the federal government did not approve that, that, you know, they let that sunset. And so, it went back to a floating rate. The floating rate's right around seven and a half percent right now. That's really the difference in this project. Had this project been allocated and awarded tax credits in December of two thousand thirteen, those credits would have been worth approximately six, six point eight million dollars. But the fact that it was February of two thousand fourteen, and that law wasn't renewed, the nine percent rate went down to about seven and a half, those tax credits are then only worth six point two, a little, almost six point three million dollars. All of a sudden, a, a project that was fully funded, or, or, you know, the, the amounts were there, all of a sudden, because of a change in law, we're, we're at about six hundred thousand dollars short. They found an investor willing to pay a higher rate for these credits, they did some deferred development fees, found a little bit of other financing. But again, are four hundred thousand dollars short based on this change in law. So all of a sudden, this project, either we, we, we need to find financing of, of about four hundred thousand dollars, or, or the entire thing won't happen. So, that's kind of, the, the tax credit piece is, is essential and integral to it, and that's kind of what's driving all the rest of it, all these changes as well.
Okay. So, I, I thought the tax law still allowed the nine percent a year for ten years?
It's a, no, it's a, it's now a floating rate right now, and it's, it's at about seven and a half.
Okay. Now, you said, is this going to be done under historic guidelines, since it is on the register?
Yeah, yes, this is a, the, I mean, yes, that's correct. It's historic preservation, so...
And any type of tax incentives on that?
No. There's, I don't believe so. I'll let Paula talk to that if, if there is.
Now, sometimes in this type of a, a federal tax credit project, after fifteen years, it goes off the tax rule. Is that anticipated here?
That won't be the case in this project. The managing member, the nonprofit partner, i- is a nonprofit, but it's not an exempt entity. So, in fifteen years, typically that would happen, you know, if it was a housing authority or something, that there would be an exemption in fifteen years, or potentially. In this case, it's just a nonprofit, they, they wouldn't be exempt, so that's not really an issue in this, this case. It will, it's intended, or it, as far as we can see, it would be on the tax rolls for...
Okay. And so, basically, if it's worth one point one million, and you get to three point two or three million, you're looking at a huge loss there essentially, and what's put in other than the fact the tax credits make it up? Which is not typical...
Which is the case of most tax credit projects, which is the idea, that's the reason why we have those federal tax credits, to allow people to build quality affordable housing that's not, because otherwise, the, the rents, the, these restricted rents just can't support the amount that's needed to re, to make a qual, quality housing. So, yeah, there, yes, you're right, but yes, that's the way it always is on these projects.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Larry?
I think you mentioned that the Capital Environments Commission had made some recommendations, and that some of those had been adopted, or maybe all of them. Can you speak to which ones and let us know what they are?
Yeah, um, the one was the, there was a, um, an, an awning or a canopy that was historically on the President Building, and based on, they wanted to see that replicated and replaced. So we'll be, so that will be added to, that'll be one of the changes to the facade, really the only noticeable one, and that was to kind of replicate that historical look. The others were in the courtyard. One of them was this, there'll be a fenced, it's, it's a fence with, um, kind of a gated, gated top, and that was something they had requested and wanted there. Again, these were all just sort of more historical, period piece, accurate pieces. Some more green space was added based on their recommendations. The mailboxes were moved back to a different location, and, um, there may have been some others, but that's, those are the ones I...
Because that's basically what the courtyard is right now, is, is mailboxes are sitting right in the middle.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the courtyard.
The courtyard, right, yeah.
Was there also some concern about parking across from the Capitol? Or did they have some concerns about loading and unloading and...
Yeah, the, I think those were brought up at, at Capital Environments. I don't, I mean, I don't think we, I'm not sure what was decided or, or done based on that. I'm not sure how to speak to that.
John?
I'm curious about how it was determined to change the units. Because you started with, it was at eighty-four?
Mm-hmm.
And you end up with seventy-one. You now have fewer efficiency and more one-bedroom units, which take up more room. And, of course, these are meant for lower-income folks, people of limited resources, and so now there are fewer units, and presumably, these units are a little more expensive. Can you tell me how you determined the, you know, the mix of apartments here?
I may defer a little bit to somebody who's following me on that, but essentially, the reason is, the, there was fifty-five efficiencies that were very small and really not appropriately sized. And so, to create even, I mean, a one-bedroom, so out of those fifty-five efficiencies and twenty-nine one-bedrooms, the, the mix changed in order to create a more reasonable space. I mean, and so, although you're losing some units, I think the basic idea is that everybody deserves a, a quality home, and, and some of those were really not sufficiently, you know, efficiency that didn't real, wasn't really a sufficient space to live in.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, or, next person, please?
Paula Ryan, R-H-I-A-N, two thousand two, South Eleventh Street. I'm with Excel Development Group, and we have partnered with Interfaith Housing Coalition on this project. And I do have a few photos. You had asked about the awning. Which side up? Does it matter?
A side up.
This is the historic awning that was removed several years ago due to safety concerns. It was disintegrating. That's what I was asking.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. They were afraid it was going to fall. And so it has been in storage for probably four to five years at least. So that is one of the things that would be restored and put back up. As you can see, the roofs are not in very good condition, which has caused damage to some of the interior units. Now, it's a little easier to see on these. Let's go that way. So there were quite a few units that were not habitable. And the other question, Councilman Cook, on the, the number of units, the reasoning behind that was there were quite a few people who wanted one-bedroom units, the tenants that were living there, because many of the efficiency units were two hundred and twenty-five square feet. I mean, they were very, very, very tiny. And so, the decision was made to reduce the density a little bit and make some of those units just a little more homey, and a little more room. We do have, but we still have efficiency units, and there are several tenants who are very adamant they want to stay in a small unit. They may have some, some, um, health issues or some mental health concerns, and for those folks, a small space is very important. So we thought it was important to keep a number of efficiency units for those folks. We currently have sixty tenants on the property, and it's very important to us to keep them. And so we've tried to make it a little more user-friendly and to bring things into the twenty-first century. One of the things we did very early on, as we walked through with State Historic Preservation and with Ed Zimmer from the city, and took them through the buildings and said, you know, what do we need to be concerned with? What do you, you want to see? What's very important? And one of the things that came out of that were the awnings, redesigning the awning between the buildings, because it's not very appropriate. That stone and wrought iron fence was recommended, which would give the, the tenants a little more seating area in a more, not really private... which would give the tenants a little more seating area, in a more, not really private, because it's wrought-iron at the top, so you can see through it. But it does give them a little bit of separation from the street. Moving the dumpster back a little bit, so that it's not right on Lincoln Mall. Moving the mailboxes. We've actually found some, I guess you'd call them a sleeve, that goes over the posts, and that caps the top, so that they look much more 1920s, along with period park benches for the seating for the tenants, things like that. One of the really fun things is that the units have phone niches, which anybody under the age of 40 probably doesn't even know what that's for. But what we decided to do is, we're going to replicate those by the door in every unit, with plug-ins in them, as a charging station. So, trying to keep the touches, keeping all the terrazzo floors inside. But just making them, bringing them, so that they're habitable for the next 50 to 100 years.
John?
I'm Carl. Thank you, and thanks for the work you're doing on this project. Occupancy rates before taking this, the improvements on, what are those running currently?
They've been running between 80 and 90%.
Okay. And those individuals, now that work is starting, or when work starts, where do they go?
They are staying on the property.
There, okay.
What we are intending to do is one half vertically of a building at a time, and we have enough units to keep everyone on the site.
And is there a resident manager that's on?
There is a, yes, there's a property manager on site, and then there's also a supportive service person who's on site two to three days a week, who connects the tenants with services, and also operates an on-site food pantry for the tenants.
What's, is this the same group, essentially, that's been doing this, these buildings for years and years, that will be continuing to do it?
Yes, and the president of the board is here, he's up next. But it's the Interfaith Housing Coalition, which is a partnership that actually the city put together in 1992. And it's a partnership between First Plymouth, St. Paul United Methodist, and the Unitarian Church.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Lang, L-A-N-G-E. My address is 1859 South Pershing Road, here in Lincoln. Just to give you some brief follow-up background that has been mentioned, I'm with the Interfaith Housing Coalition. I'm the president of the board. As Paula said, there are three churches that started this project back in 1992, in partnership with the city. The three churches are First Plymouth, St. Paul Methodist, and the Unitarian Church. We have a board of directors of this nonprofit corporation. Two members of each of the three churches are on the board, and then we have five at-large board members. And we are the same group that's gonna continue to operate, as you asked about. This is a much-needed renovation, as has been indicated. This will put us in a position to continue to provide low-income housing for many, many years. This is an all-volunteer board. Any questions you might have?
Bush? Thank you. You? Next?
Good evening. My name is Mark Kohler. I live at 700 South 18th Street. I am president of the Capital View Neighborhood Association, which this project is in our neighborhood. And our neighborhood association wholeheartedly agrees with it. We really look forward to seeing, there's just so many facets of it that are a plus, that we look forward to. One of the big things I see, and our association, is they're not displacing anybody. They're doing it in staggered stages, and the folks that are there get to stay. And again, it's providing low-income housing, which I see a need for in Lincoln. And it's got our full support.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
That would conclude our public hearing portion. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing ordinance's second reading are items 14 through 16. Item 17 is approving Sun Valley Lanes as a keynote satellite site at 321 Victory Lane, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 18 is the report of claims against the city for October 1st through the 15th, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. John?
I'd like to move Mr. Lanick's claim from denial to allowed.
Hearing no second.
Okay, thank you.
Who moved it? Who moved it?
Fellers.
Fellers.
I seconded it.
Okay, seconded by Roy. Discussion? I would say that while I'm, I understand Mr. Lanick's concern, it's a little difficult to deal with the Municipal Tort Claims Act, and it is what it is. So, next item, please, or I mean, call or roll, please?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 19 is Comp Plan Conformance 14019, approving an amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to add the A and P to redevelopment project, introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Call or roll?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's third reading. Item 20 is Annexation 14005, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately 39 acres of property generally located at Southwest 56th Street and West O Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion. Call or roll?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 21 is Change of Zone 14026, application of R and D development for a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to I-1 Industrial District and H-3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at Southwest 56th and West O Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion. Call or roll?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Fellers? Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's first reading are items 22 through 28. I would like to request on items 26, 27, and 28, we have had a request from the Urban Development Department to delay introduction for one week.
So moved.
Second.
Open mic?
No, we're voting to move.
Okay.
I am seven to eight, or delayed a week.
Okay. Call or roll?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items 29 and 30. Our pending list are items 31 and 35 through 35. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda, and not plan to appear on a future agenda, may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone session.
Come right on up. If you intend to speak, come on down front. Go ahead, sir, if you want to come down, she'll, she can sit in the front row and wait for you, you're next.
Go ahead.
Come on up.
No, I was trying to get everybody to come up.
First of all, I'd like to give each of the council members, one, two, three, four, five, six, a copy of what I got here. Okay. Did I give enough there or not? Okay.
And could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Ronald Sheldon. My address is 1626 D Street, Apartment 116. Okay. Problem has come up lately, is the police department does not know how to deal with electrical-assisted bicycles. There is not any real clear position, place to put it. And according to federal law, you're supposed to count them as a bicycle, if there's less than 750-watt motor, and had maximum speed is less than 20 miles an hour, irregardless of state and city ordinances. And right now, some of the police, police try to categorize them as mopeds. Sometimes they just categorize them, as some of them, if they look like bicycle, just to keep them as bicycles. Other times, they try to count them as electric-assisted mobility device. And in one sense, you could say they're a minibike, because they're, they're don't have, a minibike is counted as anything less than 14-inch wheels, or less than 44 cc's. What's trouble is, electric motor doesn't have cc's, so you could say it was zero cc's, or you could just say it's not, not applicable. So, we got a very, very confusing situation among the police department, and some, they just don't even agree among themselves. And I feel that they, that I think it would be good for the city to pass an ordinance to include these on as bicycles, and meet the federal law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry?
How are you guys? Actually, I'm doing about the veterans. I read in the paper you were a veteran. Thank you for your service. I come from a military family, maybe that's what my problem is. Terry Pope Gonzalez, here we go. I have all these for you guys, if you want them. If you don't want them, toss them. I also have these for you guys, because this is what I'm gonna read. Sorry, honey, I'm not very tall. All right, this is how we're gonna start, at least to start with. "Promise my brothers I would be civil." Are you ready? Thank you for giving that to that gentleman. I was a little disappointed you didn't give it to him right away, but that's okay. This is what it says. Reverend Don Coleman put this together for me. He's of Mad Dad's, the Lincoln chapter. Here's what it says. "What is freedom? You cannot see it, but you will know instantly when it's gone. You cannot feel it, but it shelters you like a robe. You cannot taste it, but a taste was never sweeter. You cannot hear it, but it rings out like a thousand bells. You cannot buy it, though it often comes with a heavy cost. You cannot sell it, for it is not yours to sell. You cannot crush it, yet few things are more fragile. You cannot extinguish it, the flames will rekindle. You cannot keep it for yourself and gather strength when shared. You cannot force it on another, if that is not its nature. Well, it can be stolen from someone without their consent. Most of history's battles have been waged to win it back." That's the Senator Rod Grahams, Minnesota. I didn't realize that he was deceased. Here's another one. You guys might want to hear about this one. This is my letter to the editor. Gordon Winters, opinion editor, was dated May, or Monday, August 25, 2014. See, my father-in-law got killed August 22, 2009, from that concrete company. Oh, and just for the record, we had been zoned residential from the very beginning. So, when they say about the industrial, no, it was open fields. If I'd have been staying, I'd have bought those open fields. But see, everybody's looking at me like I'm nothing. I'd have called the brothers, we'd have owned that. We'd have turned it into a park for the children, not a concrete company that makes toxic concrete. So, here's my letter to the editor. It's a little harsh. It's not quite as good as the senator who's called it oversight. "Thank you for your recent articles for the information on TIF. The creative writing article was very interesting. The one Dave Landis, Director of Lincoln, Nebraska Urban Development Department, and the lady senator were changing up the rules for TIF. Something about this TIF creative writing just doesn't smell right. My brothers and I read these articles together, and we have some questions. Number one, when we were coming up, creative was another word for backdoor deal and meeting in a shady alley. Number two, who decides when the TIF rules can be creative? Number three, do all the broken-down neighborhoods get a fair chance at the creative TIF? Number four, is the word TIF just another word for stealing? Thank you for your time, Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder of the Salt Creek Neighborhood Association, in memory of Joe and Scout Gonzalez. Always put Psalms 91, reminds me to behave. 402-499-5716." Gave you a copy. It's notarized, certified. I learned that from you, Jeff, and Judge Ott. So, here you go. And all of this here, you can put it in, because that's what I learned from everybody. I don't like to be paraphrased. I liked word for word. So, here we go. That goes on you. Let's see what else I did. I come up with another one. Here we go. "To whom it may concern, for the Lincoln, Nebraska City Council meeting, October 27, 2014, 5:30 PM, open-mic night. I am Terry Pope Gonzalez, daughter of Ascension Joe Gonzalez, 1941-1942 Golden Glove Boxing, bantamweight champion. He boxed under the colors of the Omaha World Herald. I now own his property, 349 South 1st Street, First and L Streets, and South 1st and West L Streets. It is three blocks in Lancaster County, Nebraska. 68508-402-4995716. When you see me here in front of you on crutches, carrying a bag of medicine, and carrying an EpiPen, it's because I'm poisoned by the toxic-contaminated concrete dust. The crusher's on Third and Q, five blocks from the new arena, and the batch plant's on First and L Street. Please see the attached." Actually, that's all I've got to say today, but I'll be back every single mic. Oh, I brought this, so you could see, because not one of you have this. You can't even buy this. See, one of your Hall of Famers gave it to me. See this? It's an NFL game ball. Your NF, so your Hall of Famer gave it to me, gave it to me, because I'm his Mama T. You guys can't even own this. So, just so you understand, I'm not done, and I've got another 50 years of fight in me. Oh, and one more thing, and I'm leaving, because you always think I talk too much. I, and I've always known it, because see, my family's from Goodland, Kansas. We actually drank the same water that Brooke Dernger did. I come from a very famous, famous general. Have a good day. Oh, and I really enjoy, I'm done, but I enjoy her, because she comes up here, she's diminished capacity, she doesn't get paid like all of you do to be here. She comes up and gives her freedom of speech. And yes, I'm from Colorado. Colorado, we like our guns.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. And I am gonna wait to listen to her speak. Come on, Jake, get up here. Show the people what you got.
Change your up.
I invite you to a paradise on earth. There are some corrections. Do you want vandalism and graffiti on walls the last day of October? No, the last day of October can be pennies from heaven day, with children dressed as angels coming to the front door to ask for pennies from heaven with a sack. Adults give the child pennies, dates, and homemade sweets. Don't eat the label candies, ice cube candies, an example of a candy that was recalled and possibly had meth. Terrorists have gotten into companies that sell candy. Bake angel food cake, and give the children, give it to the children dressed as angels. Children who dress as angel costume are protected by angels as they travel. Try to have them go only to homes that you know are nice, and don't be out too late. Mike Kenny, head of the state prisons in Kearney, is Donnie Kenny. He was a drug dealer for over 30 years, and served in jail... over 30 years and served in jail and out of jail. Obama stated three days ago, he wants to transform America into a nation no one will recognize. Neighborhoods are being taken over by foreigners. Foreigners have come by ship by the millions. National Missing Persons Bureau quit over three years ago. Lethal herbs like belladonna and woodworm are still sold at equatorial and health food stores to be put in fridge food. March 2014 unclaimed property report showed a tenth of Nebraskans missing. This is proof of stealth genocides done to Americans with salviate gas while sleeping or tainting of food while away from home. School teachers need to be alarmed because so many foreigner students are in their classrooms while American families didn't all move away during the summer. Put a white cross above the doorknob, on window ledge, and on your fridge for Christ to make you safe. Wear rosary and sing hymns from 8 to 9 in the evening. Learn our healings, only the kind shall remain. New candidates that ran for state and local offices have expressed an opinion only about taxes, the economy, and the transcontinental pipeline. They are not Americans, they are Russians. Americans are not liking Ebola on our land. Wear the miraculous medal so the plague doesn't come. Americans are not liking groundwater being regulated by feds to cause withered crops, or the Missouri and Colorado creeks flooded by Russians. Lethal herbs sold. Chinese wind cannon mimicking a tornado affecting over 200 small towns. Cuss words that have been in shopping mall music. 80% of college students at the University of Nebraska were Chinese this July. Parents of American students have had to pay for tuition, and foreigners don't under the Dream Act. American officials have invested in foreigners instead of Americans, starting companies. Bioethicists have been in hospitals doing away with American patients. Bus riders have noticed a lot of whites at the university speak Russian, while Soviets have genocided in Europe. There have been no National Missing Persons Bureau for a couple of years. Americans are missing, and foreigners have taken their homes. Can you have a city missing persons bureau? Let's ask for divine interventions."
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Mr. Chair, seeing nobody coming forward, I'd move for adjournment.
Second.
Roy. Discussion. Kohler, all?
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
You are adjourned.